Well, I'm done.
Are you done?
Well, yeah, at the end of twenty twenty.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's my first, first step into the data.
Okay.
We have eleven months left in this. You're free to travel. We're starting now, ready.
That was good.
Hi, I'm Latien.
Perfect. It is eight o'clock. Can we stand for the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there any public discussion?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. I noticed it returned sixty-one thousand dollars in FEMA funds for drainage projects. Uh, do you know what projects that they pertain to?
Um, I would have to visit with Leon for sure, but I believe that was, I think, a decent chunk of that was for four lot eleven, open ditch. I'm not sure about all of it.
Was that all one chunk then, or was it in smaller?
It wa- it was under one project, but that doesn't mean it's limited to one specific area. When we did the project, or when FEMA broke out the projects in eighteen and nineteen, when they did those disasters, they were not grouped very well. So there's stuff from different areas of the county in the same project. So it's kinda confusing that way.
Basically, they let money go back that could've been used on that ditch. Cause we've been getting charged, uh, engineering fees on that project, cause I've asked for them. And I got you guys on the record saying you destroyed the records. What's going on there on DD four lot eleven?
Not sure what you're talking about on destroying records, but there's.
Well, I got a, I got a recorder on you and Amber Garman and Roger Jars saying why couldn't handle those records. And, and the reason was that Roger said that they were destroyed.
That's news to me.
And I've been asking for those engineering costs for years. Never got a thing from you guys.
I, I can't speak to every specific record you've got, but I know you've gotten a lot of records from this courthouse. So I, I don't know if you're looking for something specific, but.
Well, DD four lot eleven, I never got any of the records I requested. And it wasn't because of Dan, she wasn't here at the time. It was Amber and you and, and Roger Jars.
At that time, it would not have even been my district, so I don't think I would've been involved at any point, but.
DD four lot eleven goes in your district.
Barely, but Roger's handling.
Quite a little bit, Kyle.
The ditch does not. It only goes in about quarter of a mile at the old districts. So. But, yeah, there was, there was funds returned for projects that were not completed. But, um, that was, that was stuff that we were paid for upfront that was not done.
So you never talked to anybody about return, cause you, he would've called me, asking about that, to return those funds. I'm on that district. And he said, you're right in the boardroom, and he talked about patrons, and they didn't want to spend the money. I'm not that stupid to let money go back when you only have to pay fifteen cents on a dollar on a repair. And it's you guys' responsibility to keep that.
He, he may have been talking about drains seven on that. And I know there's, there's another project I got asked about for, um, a total of over two hundred thousand that I don't know if the work is done on that. But Roger said he would, Leon had sent an email, Roger said he would get the stuff put together for that here the other day. So we'll have to get records put together for that, for the payment request. But, um, I don't, I don't know the status of those projects, but that's a different chunk of money. There's, there's a lot of money that was available through the FEMA projects. But that's the best I can answer your question off the top of my head. If you want more specifics, I'll have to dig into it in more detail, but.
I want those records.
I'll have to work with Leon on that, figure out which project that was under. Anything else for public discussion? Seeing nothing else, do we have a, uh, motion for the agenda, to approve the agenda in minutes, or any changes?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
I have a minute.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion second on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried unanimous. Yep. Next up would be review, review and approval of claims. Is there any discussion, question on claims? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Looks like we got some transfers, um, in our packet. Anyone got any questions on those? General basic to secondary road, and road basic to secondary road. If not, we will acknowledge the transfers. We have discussion, decision, support on state auditor's bill relating to, an act relating to the penalty for public employees and public officials taking money from a public employer by the state auditor. Joe is listed on this.
Yeah, all he wants to do is change the law so that when, uh, the penalty phase comes by the judge, the judge can't waive, uh, the incarceration of the public official for taking ten thousand or over. And I think being the auditor gave you guys a apple pie reward or something earlier. They should give you guys a name, a favor, and this would help to that, get them off the ground.
It was an act he brought up in twenty twenty around showing that it's an act of life to show that it died on the border unless he has something new and not finding.
This bill is currently on the floor?
We're trying to get it off, and I don't think it's, the last I knew, I knew it did not have a seven or a house number.
Oh, okay.
Support going, it would probably get picked up.
So it's from twenty twenty, um.
I did send it to Todd. Uh, he's unable to be here this morning. Uh, he said it didn't have any suggestions for you guys or advice either way.
Well, I guess, open for any discussion, but if it's not, it's not currently on the floor, I would be surprised if it actually.
Happens in session.
Gets any traction, yeah.
There's a lot going on right now, but I think it's gonna need a little more attention than the stuff.
So it's, it's currently in the judiciary committee, yeah?
Uh, I know the bill's, uh, there, uh, they're looking at it, but it would help them, you guys, to support. I don't know why anybody would wanna support it. You know, I mean, and I, I'd be glad to get that down there to, uh, legislators that's listed on that, uh, topic. You know, if I got a second.
Are these, are these even the current committee assignments?
Yes.
They are?
From what I can see on the website, the website is current.
Okay. I haven't checked.
I know, I know the senators are at least, right?
I couldn't find anything regarding that.
I don't know.
You guys have supported stuff before, you know, I forget, say.
I, I don't know that we've written letters like this, not in my last four years. Jack, do you remember ever doing a letter like this?
To the.
Legislature.
Legislature. Well, we've done some supports, some things, I mean.
We've done like proclamations for days or whatever, but I don't think we've supported a bill in this regard. I've always had conversations with, with legislators over the phone or in person or whatever. But I don't think we've ever done anything like that.
Todd's looking at this to see.
No, he's not. He, he wasn't able to be able to be here and he.
Well, no, but I said, but he's going to look at it.
No.
He isn't gonna look at it at all.
No. Is it even any direction for either way?
I mean, without.
To me, it's the states, the states work out, I don't want to be involved, but it's the state. It's like the state coming down here trying to tell us what, you know, we don't like what the state says or knows in our affairs either. I don't see a reason to.
I guess they have a lot to discuss this session, and if it is important to them enough, it'll get out of committee. And if it's important to us enough at that time, like then, maybe revisit that.
Revisit that.
Yeah, yeah.
I doubt, certainly, to see if they're making it to the floor this year, if that everything's well.
Yeah.
Done for this year, and that happens, you know.
It's not, it's not done, but if it's not in the works, it's probably not going.
It's, it's hard to get stuff surfaced again.
Yeah.
I would agree, just see if it gets it, garners any steam, and, and always the one supportive they ever can.
Would you wanna table it, or what would you?
Well, I was just saying, no action taken on it. I mean, it's, it's something, we can come back to later, table it, you know. Just signal action taken, and if it ever, we wanna talk about it, go back and generate a candidate.
Yeah, it's not something that we would, would need to necessarily make a decision as a board. But, I mean, independently, we could support it, and, um, you know, the, those watching can get information on it, and if they want to contact their, you know, representatives and let them know that they support it as well. Um, I think it's more of just kind of informational at this point, because, yeah, it's probably not gonna make it to the floor. So. I appreciate it, but no decision.
You guys don't want to help it get to the floor, that's what this, you know. You guys don't want to help it get it to the floor. Is that why?
I, I would, I would not.
Opposed to the bill at all?
No, no, it's just.
Well, then you can show support, big deal.
We can show support, but I don't think it necessarily needs to be a board decision to show support. It's more of a, on an individual basis, that you need to contact your, you know, representatives and let them know that you support it as a constituent, by us making a decision on it.
Most of our, most of our lobbying, you wanna call it, in that respect, ISAC, it doesn't focus, I don't know, ISAC is.
This is not on their radar at all.
No.
I mean, most of.
We, we had to work pretty hard to get a topic for ju- juvenile detention.
ISAC is, you know, if ISAC has something that they're, that they're lobbying for, that will show support for that. Just to pull an individual bill out on their own, I don't.
And those guys get so many letters and so many emails from so many entities, and another letter isn't gonna change their mind. I mean, more effective would be just us calling or recalling, or, you know, Senator Rowley or President Stone, or whoever.
Yeah.
To discuss that. I, that's what I would say.
You saw the written communication, you guys didn't call, cause now you're back to, to use support. Now, if you guys don't wanna back them for drawing support, go ahead with the lean, and I don't know why you wouldn't do that.
Well, it's that ISAC reviews all those bills, and ISAC is our entity for.
Well, and it's, it's not even a bill right now, so that's.
Yeah.
I mean, if it's a proposal from.
We'll look at it again.
Three years ago.
There's a, if, if there's an actual bill on the floor.
But would you talk to, ask ISAC, I guess, about, see if they.
Yeah.
They give, give us any information, all right?
Well, can you write in the minutes, no action taken? That sounds like the consensus of the board.
Thanks for bringing it, Phil.
Um, for GPS, I did some research on that, got prices. There's a difference if we install it or if they install it. Um, if we install it, I was told seventeen forty-five per month, and that's with a twelve-month contract. If they install it, it's eighteen ninety-five, so a dollar fifty a month for the install, basically. The contact info.
Of what's going?
Oh, the contact info I got was to call us Derek from Doug, and he's not our representative anymore. There's a Duncan, so I have his name and number as well, but.
And this is from there, right?
That's the same stuff we have with the, um, engineers department. It's through Verizon. So it's shy of twenty bucks a month.
So this, this would essentially add it to the ambulances to allow Phil more access to information, and then just to the county-owned vehicles.
Yeah, all county-owned vehicles.
There's discussions in APS on all county vehicles.
Yeah, we were talking about, yep.
So be including, well, the assessor's car.
Yep.
Um.
So for that, I mean, if you.
Custodians, HR as a vehicle. I don't know what side of that.
If you figure twenty, twenty times twelve, that's two hundred and forty bucks. So I mean, for one vehicle, two hundred bucks, it's not gonna, not gonna add up to that much.
That would be each department's expense within their budget.
Right now, that is how it is through, um, Doug's. So, I mean, we could, we could run it all through the supervisor's budget if you wanted, but I don't, I don't know that it makes much difference.
Ours would have to be in a separate.
They're.
Yeah, yours, yours would be separate, but we're talking the rest of them.
What's the actual equipment cost to purchase everything?
The equipment is included with the subscription.
You get the, you get the devices free with the.
With the subscription.
Subscription. I think it's the dealer.
Yeah, and then it's like a small installation fee, just like when you get your cell phone. You can get a free cell phone, but you gotta pay for that initial setup fee, and then monthly after that, so.
For, for eighteen bucks a month, I don't think we can even begin to talk about installing them ourselves.
So you want to actually own the equipment? They give you the equipment, providing you use their service.
Yeah. It's all, it's all platformed that way.
And this was something that EMS was looking to do, or they were wanting us to.
They're, they're interested in it because the system they're using right now isn't very good for Phil to come in.
Yeah, and Phil had, Phil had called me on my way down this morning and asked if I could let him know when we were getting close to this. And I texted him, he said he was at Kemna's, so he'd be over shortly, so I don't know how soon he'll be here. But, yeah, he was.
Do we wanna, we wanna wait? Come back to this when Phil, Kelly Phil can come in and speak to it, or?
If you want, I mean, you could otherwise.
Because he already, he already shared how he stood on it.
Yeah, yeah.
He was hoping we would move forward on it.
And being it's already on the secondary road vehicles, it just makes sense to have a universal.
Yep.
And, and everyone else who has a vehicle has been in here too during that discussion, I think.
Yeah, I think, I think the sheriff's office would be the.
Well, excluding, excluding the sheriff's office, yes, yes.
Do you know how many vehicles roughly? Those would be four.
With the ambulances, I'd say probably a dozen total. That'd be. Judy would have one, custodians, sanitarian.
HR.
HR. Phil and Carissa each have one, so that'd be six, plus maybe six ambulances. So, yeah, probably ballpark, a dozen.
Is it necessary on them other vehicles outside the ambulance system, departments want to have this installed, or to just?
It, it's more of a, a why not kind of thing, because there, there is some benefits to having it. Um, for instance, if there was an emergency, you know, if they're out visiting someone and something happened and they couldn't get out, you know, we at least have a location on them, kind of thing. Um, also, if for some reason someone decides to take one of our county vehicles for a joyride, we can track it that way too. Um.
There, there's lots of ways the system could be used, but at the end of the day, I think my purpose for putting it on the agenda originally was so that it's uniform. We don't have just one department or one individual that's singled out, so to speak, in that regard. And for the price tag of it, I think it's well worth it. I mean. Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, yeah, if, if it's your job, you know, as an assessor's car, you're going out, driving around and doing assessments. It's not like somebody's watching you.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's just for situations as needed to be universal across the county.
Yep.
And you'd be watched within your own department, too.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yep. Department heads would have access to it.
Right.
And, I mean, we discussed a little bit last week, but I think supervisors should not be restricted from that information, bare minimum. So. That, I don't know if that's something we need to include in the motion. It sounded like it from the conversation previously, but.
I don't know if that would be included in this motion. You know, as far as access or not, it is more of a decision on whether to purchase and have them installed.
Yeah, and it was, it was just part of the conversation that came up the last time, but.
I do think we need a little bit more information on, um, how it's gonna work into the budgets and things like that before we move on.
Well, we, we can, we have numbers, and we kinda have to make a decision so that we can put numbers in the budget. So it's kind of the op- I would say it's the opposite of that. We need to, we need to make a decision so that we can move forward. I would say.
See what Phil and one of the, on the ambulances, he knows exactly where they're at.
Right. And, and Phil's budget would be impacted the most because more units, the rest would all be.
Cause he got eight or twelve.
Seven at least, yeah.
Well, him and Chris, and six ambulances.
They're separate.
Oh, they're separate, that's right.
So, yeah, seven at least. But, yeah, I mean, that would, that would impact his more than anyone else, so.
Then if he's wanting it, that's, he knows what it costs, yeah.
Yep.
I have one, oh, I have business vehicles, and I tell you, business employees and everything, if they're speeding or if they're not where they're supposed to be, you can set up, get a warning.
A lot of businesses do that, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's.
You can even monitor maintenance on that, you know.
I think it's getting more common as a whole, just businesses, individuals, the whole nine yards. It's, it's more of a common thing now here, so.
Part of tracking your assets. I mean, you put money into those vehicles and, you know.
It's cheap oversight as far as.
Right, right, so, I mean, hey, there's Phil.
We were just talking about you for the last half hour. No? Um, we were talking about the GPS, and I don't know if I told you the prices I got on the phone this morning or not, but it was seventeen forty-five if we install, or eighteen ninety-five if they install professionally for a twelve-month contract, so less than twenty bucks a month per unit, so.
Per unit.
Yep, so we were talking about that, and, um, leaning toward making a decision so that we can move forward with including that in the budget and all sorts of things that way, so. Do you have anything you wanna say, or, I guess, you missed the discussion we already had, but.
I've been trying to research this and find something for the ambulances for a while anyway. Currently, we're using an app, and our app isn't sufficient for what we need to do. So we've been looking for something different.
Yep.
With our vehicles, mainly the ambulances.
No?
I would make a caution to, to, uh, have them install GPS systems on all county vehicles, excluding the sheriff's department.
Okay, now the motion on the floor for all county vehicles, if that sheriff's office, their second?
I'll second.
Got that all written down there, Tim? Perfect. Um, all those in favor?
One point of discussion, actually, quick. Being it says all county vehicles, is it necessary that we need to define what the vehicle is, cause that was brought up? Cause, for example, not every quote vehicle has a, you know, with the road department.
Right, considering they have their, they have them in their, um, lawnmowers. I mean, we're not talking, we're gonna put them in the.
Yeah, I.
We don't need GPS on the loader at the transfer station, you know, like.
Yeah.
So.
Well, that, yeah, that probably doesn't have it.
Are you gonna include the ATVs that emergency management has?
I think we should, probably should, yeah.
And do you know what provider we're gonna be?
Verizon, same as, same as secondary road.
All along that one portal for everything.
Uniform platform.
Okay.
Um.
Would that be necessary to, to figure out before making a decision?
What's that?
I mean.
No, which, which vehicles classify it as all county vehicles? Not doing it to vehicles that aren't necessary, or what classifies the vehicle, I guess?
Do you think we'll license plate on it?
That would.
That would, that.
That would be a common sense approach.
All licensed.
All licensed vehicles.
Yeah.
So not the ATVs, then?
Those would have licenses.
Well, yeah, those would be licensed, because they're over the road.
They should.
Well, they don't have a plate on them. They might have all of them.
They have permanent number on them.
They should have registration and stuff.
Registration, but I don't know if they have a plate on them.
Right, still be registered, registered.
Right, yeah.
Well, we should make that, instead of license, we could do registering. Registered, they're all.
All registered.
They're all registered. I mean, even trailers registered.
Trailer's not a vehicle.
I know trailer not a vehicle.
All licensed vehicles excluding ATV.
Did you guys talk about who has access to that portal, and?
Department heads, um, and then super major.
And are you gonna lock, lock down to, like Judy has access to her vehicle?
Yeah, only. Yep.
Okay.
All, all licensed vehicles, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion?
So are we excluding the ATVs?
I think it should be included.
I think it should be too.
I don't know, it's easy to put an ATV in.
Do you?
And then. How do you want that portal managed? Are we gonna have one account for Verizon with all of that equipment in it? Do you wanna get a bill for each department to have that? Do you want it? You know, there's some other operational questions there.
We could, we'll probably have to work out some fine details with that, but I don't know that you can include all that in a motion.
Okay, I just, and there's some.
Yeah.
Concerns there, I thought we wanna handle that, and how we do the. Individualizing of the portal for each department.
Yeah, I think that's fine tuned administration of it.
And who has access to that, that should be defined as well at your level, apparently.
Does that come off, does it, right, does that come off a phone, or? Yeah, it's a separate unit, so it's a separate unit, it's like a.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a phone, but.
Are the ATVs something you feel is necessary to have or no?
Me?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
I think it's a little bit of use to get, the only, the only advantage would be is if. Somebody called and questioned you guys that the ATV was out during snowstorm and you wanted to see where they're at, I mean, that would be.
Sure.
A rare occasion, but. Normally in those situations, it's either sheriff's office or somebody that's using them at that point, or us, we're just manually using those, so. They're not a high use vehicle, um. I don't know if you justify the cost for the, the under use.
Let's do excluding ATVs.
Got enough room to write there.
Can I, can I repeat just so?
Yes, you can read it back to us.
Motion by Nathan, second by Wacker, to approve the installation of GPS units on all licensed county vehicles except the sheriff's office and UTVs.
Okay, everyone understand the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Should I roll call for another?
If you wanna request a roll call, we can, otherwise, we don't have to. You vote, you vote, at the end of the day, you still vote either way.
Right, right.
Would you like a roll call vote?
No, no, that's fine, I just didn't know if it, if it was necessary or not.
No, does not.
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
See you.
Hey Doug, we're ready for you in the boardroom. Thanks. I think he went out.
Good morning, everyone.
We are up to planning and zoning administrator and from the discussions that we had during the budget. Uh, with the, when you brought the minutes and everything in from twenty twelve or whatever time that was. I think it's worth the discussion, is that something you're wanting to get rid of those responsibilities, where we should separate that back out, or?
Can you catch me up here on? Um, so he's been serving on as the um zoning commissioner, correct? Administrator, um, and then.
Wasn't twenty twelve, wasn't it?
Yeah, I got the minutes right here, um.
Oh.
I didn't remember if you were here for that or not, Carter.
Okay. I think I was just leaving then.
Yeah.
You might have been just leaving.
Okay, as interim planning and zoning administrator, fill out three months for replacement, which we never.
Ten years ago.
Ten years ago, yeah.
Plus, so. Is that, is that something you feel we should separate those duties back off, or?
Well, it's boards. I think the intent was the board was going to attempt to. Get another zoning administrator. Um, they needed somebody to act. While they were looking and that never happened, I just wanted to bring it to your attention. Uh. There are conflicts that arise, subdivision review. Uh, I, I need to be zoning administrator and I need to be county engineer. Um. But uh. It's your guys' decision, I want you to make, I want to make you aware of that.
I guess.
Make previous boards aware of it as well.
Prior to that, what was that zoning administrator, was that a? A part-time position, or was that a?
Doug, do you recall whatever?
What did that look like, I guess, before you took over?
My, if, there was a full-time employee, Jack Bradley.
Okay.
Who had. I believe he was Jack, correct me if I'm wrong. Sanitarian.
He was sanitarian.
Weed commissioner.
Yep.
Okay.
Had multiple roles.
Okay. So that was included with a different position? At the time?
Right.
Yeah.
So what, what is the start to the process? I mean, we make a motion today to start, you know, looking, or?
Is it something you want, I mean, I, I feel like it's been working great, I have to do it, but is it something you want, is something you wanna? You don't want to continue doing?
There are, there are times where. Being the zoning administrator. Uh. Accusations get made. Um, about roles and planning and zoning. Uh. May, our, our zoning ordinance was created in nineteen seventy-three. Uh. Which makes it difficult when. Technologies or. Land uses that probably were not. Thought of in nineteen seventy-three are brought up. Including wind energy, including hazardous liquid pipelines. Um. And it creates work. When I took the planning and zoning. Administrator position, I made it clear. I was not going to go out and find violations of planning and zoning. For example. Zoning compliance permits. When people. Build structures. In Cassoot County. There. Are rules they have to follow. Particularly setbacks. Very rarely, when I see construction out in Cassoot County are. Any. Kind of communication with zoning. Ever. That there's just none. I can, I can give you multiple examples of homes that have been constructed.
I don't see, I got a couple of tiny, one thought is, something, something that would fall into either. Luke's role or into, um.
Aaron.
Judy, Judy's role.
Oh.
Either Judy or Luke would be, be something that fit well with them. The second thing is, maybe, um. Tim could do a. Little questionnaire with other counties around, see what they're doing, their zoning administrators, who's doing it? Board fits in, but off the top of my head, it just appears like they've followed well the place with Luke and Judy.
I do kinda wonder also if it would work with Aaron with his sanitarian responsibilities, he's out and about in the county and weed commissioner. That does kinda make sense if that's how it was set up before.
As Doug said, the pat, the previous guy was the, you know, sanitarian and weed commissioner, so.
I.
He also, when he was hired, he had been zoning administrator in Webster County, so he did have some experience that way.
Yeah, which I'm sure that would help, but.
Either way, it sounds like, I mean, we're gonna find another person, they're gonna need training and stuff as well, so.
Yeah, I, I would be opposed to hiring some, hiring another employee, I just don't wanna do that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I guess I'd like to see what you, oh, Sammy plan comes up.
I can have I sat through a survey.
Yes, see, see what other, what other.
Sure.
I'll get back to it. Just off the top of my head, I just say that it's something that Judy would be well qualified. That that falls into their category.
Okay, I will do that, I'll have them start back today.
Can we put it back on the agenda for like two weeks then?
Sure.
And then we can get some, get some more information, revisit it.
No decision made at the.
It's.
Well, it wasn't on the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it is, um, if anyone would like to make. If anyone would like to make a motion.
Oh, I'm saying discussing with, I don't think, that's, that's like.
Yeah, I would say we're more information gathering phase, so, I guess.
That'd be good for you. So, what, you were asking of, one of us would be to make a motion?
We don't have to.
It's, it's available to, but we don't have to.
Wow, gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
We had a discussion, but no decision.
Yep.
Yeah, so for the minutes, we can just write the discussion and further information will be gathered. And Doug, I would turn it over to you for gravel pit, ag land beds.
Yes, uh, the person who had our, um. The, what we call the E cylinder gravel pit, there is a. Uh, information in your electronic folder. Um, has retired, so, uh, we did advertise in the. Palatal County Amexburg reminder, I'm not sure what it's called, and then the Algonia reminder, trying to get, uh. Uh, people aware that Cassoot County is offering this for bids. We did receive five, uh, bids from Shane Kogle, Tim Nag, AJ Osborne, Frank Reddy. And Todd Schneider's. I don't think that any of them are present. Uh, the advertisement is in your electronic folder. Uh, but I'll go ahead and open the bids and. Review what we have here. The first bid that I have is from Shane Kogle. Uh, he bid a hundred and sixty-five dollars per acre. And his calculation then is two thousand five hundred ninety dollars and fifty cents. For the total.
And that's for the year, correct?
That would be per year, you know, it's a period. The next bid is from Tim Nag. Tim bid ninety dollars per acre. And that's one thousand four hundred thirteen dollars even per year. The next bid is AJ Osborne. Uh, he has a bid of eighty-five dollars per acre. Which would be one thousand three hundred thirty-four dollars and fifty cents. Frank Reddy. This bid is one hundred fifty-one dollars and fifty cents, one five one fifty per acre. Giving a total of two thousand three hundred seventy-eight dollars and fifty-five cents. And the last bid is from Todd Schneider's. And Todd's bid was one hundred twenty dollars per acre. And that's one thousand eight hundred eighty-four dollars. So Shane Kogle submitted the high bid there. I would contact Shane and, uh, if it's okay with the board, I'll go ahead and. Have the county attorney prepare a farm lease for that, and we will bring that up to the board for approval.
Will we do it the same, or, uh, like a three-year lease?
Yeah, three years, yes.
So. Automated, automated, do.
Yeah.
Buddy, want to get out of that?
Um, there's, I mean, it's the same contract that we have for all of our other ones, we've had some situations where. Uh, the tenant comes back to the board, um, or reassigns it to somebody, but they haven't treated them.
That is the other one that has the irrigation, right?
Correct, yes.
Will that be on the same schedule then as the other ones?
Yes.
For three years.
Yes, in fact, we do have some, uh. Leases that will be going out to tenants, uh, for them to sign and return, so they can be approved, so.
Next up is construction and right away, is there any requests?
There are no requests for construction right away today.
Okay, then discussion.
Um. County engineer, construction, the, uh, bridge down to Irvington that has been opened up for traffic, so. Uh, people are using that, we still need to put the proper guardrail on that. Wait, now we have an obstacle, Josh, um. So, uh, we will, once weather allows, we will put guardrail on, on that bridge. Uh, we still have an open position at the mechanic shop that we will be advertising for. Uh, equipment, we have one. Uh, we still have an open position at the mechanic shop that we will be advertising for, uh, equipment. We have one motor grader that's still down. Uh, it happens to be clear up in the, its territory is up in the northwest corner. The mechanic from Ziegler is on vacation, otherwise that would probably be pretty close to being in operation. Once he gets back, that'll be taken care of. And that is really all that I have for the county engineer discussion. Uh, zoning administrator, um, we have rescheduled the public hearing for the CO2 pipeline. I did email that to the board, but that's February twenty-seventh. Uh, that's a Monday. Yeah, it's Monday, February twenty-seventh, and that's at, uh, five o'clock in the afternoon. Uh, I have visited with, um, Tim Whipple. He is going to be, um, in attendance, and we're, notification has been sent to papers, it should be in all the papers tomorrow, Thursday, and then next week, Wednesday and Thursday, and also the Algonia reminder. Uh, court reporter, Tim suggested having a court reporter at this meeting. Uh, the planning of zoning budget does not have money to pay for a court reporter with the board. Does the board want me to get a court reporter for this?
Do you have any idea on the price?
Well, I happen to know a court reporter. And, um, it would probably be, uh, somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty dollars per hour, plus if there's a transcript that needs to be ordered, three dollars and fifty cents a page would be an estimate.
Is there, is there other secretary that takes turns at that meeting?
None, word for word. The reason, uh, and the reason Tim, Mr. Whipple has requested there be a court reporter, um, he has stated that if this ordinance is passed, he is, he believes that it'll go to federal court. Uh, some that will, um, based on their past, will go to federal court with this. Which is another situation. I don't know who pays for that, so.
Or is it, is it gonna be held up here, is it recorded?
It's in the board, it will be in the boardroom, yes, it will be recorded.
Does that just be recorded?
So we could, could potentially just use the owl.
Use the owl's recorder?
If it goes to court, it will have to be transcribed.
So, well, I guess in that case, might as well. That's not our budget, probably, uh, probably, I like how long that makes it usually last.
It will depend on.
Depends on who shows up and how long they speak and how long they're allowed.
Two, three hundred hours.
I, I would anticipate a couple hours for sure, so yeah, probably two to three hundred.
Well, I, I think that the pages of transcript will be more expensive than the hourly rate.
That very well could be.
I would, yeah, it, it will be.
So in this case, it probably be all the buys to do that, then.
Well, we need to put that on the agenda for next week to approve hiring a court reporter for that.
It might, it might be worth it for the board supervisor, somebody to visit with Tim Whipple too, so that you can instead relying on me, relying on him, so.
I believe he mentioned that to me when I was on the phone with him.
And, and the other, the other thing I think that it would be appropriate for the board, um, Mr. Whipple has again stated that if the board supervisor passes this ordinance, it will be going to federal court, but, uh, Mr. Whipple has indicated that ICAP insurance will pay for this as a claim.
That was discussed down at, um, ISAC here this last week, and I, I will be checking into that because of the comments that were made there. I'll, I'll talk with our insurance agent on that to verify, but that, that is how Shelby County presented it.
Okay, just, I just wanna make sure that I am communicating what I am understanding, so. Uh, there still needs to be, uh, two, two members of the planning zoning commission need to be appointed, and we need one person for the board of adjustment to be.
Can, can we put on the agenda next week? I did talk to Steve Stricker, he would like to be on the agenda next week to be appointed to the zoning committee.
I will put that on the agenda, yes, and have a motion prepared, so.
Thank you, Doug.
You bet.
Should we also have it on the agenda about a court reporter, or do you want us to visit with our attorney first, or?
I, I think as long as we have that decision made by February twenty-seventh, that would be appropriate, so February is a short month.
How much time do we need to notify someone or get someone?
I will, I will visit with some people and see if, uh, tentatively we can.
If they're available.
Schedule.
Okay. So do we want?
And I will also, uh, get some information on exactly what rates would be.
Do you want it on the fourteenth or the twenty-first?
Let's, let's discuss it again next week, and then I'm gonna do a discussion through with the zoning administrator. And if we're gonna do it, we'll have, if you feel you wanna have, if you wanna have a motion or whatever, but we'll have that decision made on the twenty-first.
Okay, do you wanna write that down for the?
Are you gonna do that?
I will take care of that, yeah.
Maybe she does his own agenda request.
Okay, is there anything else?
Uh, Cassoot Waste Management Association, uh, we have had some trailers that are, uh, doing preventive maintenance, that's up at North American Trailer up near Minnesota. Uh, the last trailer did have a little bit of a dent and, uh, cross member that, uh, needed some repair. It's going to be a, a little bit more expensive, but we really have not seen an estimate on that yet. And then also the annual meeting of the Cassoot Waste Management Association, that's March one, Wednesday, March one, twenty twenty-three. Jack, you're the representative for the board supervisors, so.
As far as the notice.
Yes, so if you could please put that in your calendar.
And that's the seventh column?
Yes. I should.
I'll be there, dude.
And Josh, I think you're the alternate. I did, I put the notice on your guys' desk, I think. Did you happen to see that this morning?
Um, on top of everything else that was sitting here?
Well, I did it yesterday, so it might, it's pretty close to the top.
Up there it is.
Yeah, so. And that's all that I have. That's all that I have.
Okay. Anything further for Doug?
Thanks.
Thanks.
Very good, thank you.
The next item up, we have discussion, decision, approve funding the ISAC soil compaction project. Um, this was talked about down at ISAC on Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Uh, Thursday.
Thursday, when we were down in Des Moines, and it was, I had previously brought it to the board before the new year.
For the pipeline?
It's, it's in regards to the pipeline, but it's a, it's a study they are doing through Iowa State to come up with results on how different levels of rainfall impact compaction and in different timeframes and, and it, it comes down to the way it's been explained to me is basically they'd be able to give recommendations or suggestions as far as construction timeframes, and if you have a one-inch rain, you should stay off the soil for X number of hours before it's back in shape to do as minimal damage as possible. And it's tied in with the pipeline for the construction side of that, but ISAC was requesting six hundred dollars from each county as a voluntary contribution. Currently, they have about half the state, I think, I don't know if those upper forties, little fifties, whatever, that have participated. And I felt we should bring it up again with all the money we're spending on attorney fees. I think it's, I think it's a no-brainer to spend a couple hundred on a soil compaction project that impacts people whether, if the, if the projects go through, it will impact them whether they support it or not, and I feel it's our duty to look out for the, um, long-term viability of the soil, considering our county's primarily agriculture land, and I think that's fairly important. So I think six hundred dollars is a very cheap investment for the information we could get back.
I remember it being discussed last year. I mean, I, I, I had questioned, you know, then why approve however many thousands of dollars, a hundred thousand dollars for an attorney fee to hand to a soil compaction study for six hundred dollars. So I, I'd, I'd be paid for it.
Yeah, so I don't know if you guys have any questions, or if you heard the discussion at that point in time or whatever, but I would, I would make a motion to approve funding the ISAC soil compaction project.
Is there an amount to?
Six hundred dollars.
I would second that.
So, any further discussion?
I guess, I mean, there's a lot of information, soil compaction, I, I mean, it's out there everywhere. What, why, what, why do we need to spend money on more information, soil compaction?
Yeah, but is that, is that information you got, is that specific to Cassoot County and our agriculture land, or is that abroad? I don't think there is any specific, I mean, this would provide specific for Cassoot County.
Iowa, Iowa State, it, it's not necessarily that it would provide specific for our county, 'cause I don't think they're gonna come up here and do a study on the soils after it has a one-inch rain here or every, every single location around the state, but they will go on your different classes of soils, your different soil types, and that is general and very broad across the state, so that's easy to replicate. Um, Iowa State is.
Secret, I admit here, but every secret, so it has soil compaction information, they dig down, they do what, you know, what.
This, this isn't, probably not quite comparable to that. Um, it's not about, well, in the end, it impacts how well crops would grow, but this is more specific to come up with guidelines on construction recommendations. It's not just how deep of a rut are you gonna leave if you drive across a field after it rains, it.
And also for damages that can happen, you have, you have evidence of what the soil was like before versus what it was like after, more than just, you know, the landowner saying, well, this changed. You have, you have more concrete evidence there.
I think, I think it's throwing money on top of other research that's already been done and it's ongoing, I don't know why we need to spend tax, taxpayer's dollars on, on something that's.
Are, are you gonna compile, go through all that data and come up with recommendations for an ordinance? Or for policy suggestions in that regard from data that's been done over the last twenty-plus years?
Policy regulations for what?
As far as if we get a one-inch rain, how many hours they need to stay off that ground before they can resume construction.
I guess what are landowners' thoughts on?
It, it would be, it would be a protection in that regard, if we can get information and policy suggestions that if there's a three-inch rain, maybe they can't do construction for a week, or whatever that magic number is, but it's based on facts and data rather than pulling a number out of a hat. And it's Land Grant University in the state, I mean, I don't.
I still think there's, it's, I don't think it's a wise use of taxpayer money. There's plenty of that out there. If you get a three-inch rain, they're not gonna go out there and walk around and what they're gonna.
Yeah, they will. That's, that's been a primary concern from individuals who have been in this boardroom about how the construction for the Dakota Access Pipeline destroyed the land out there. I, I, I think six hundred dollars, considering all we're spending on attorney fees, I, I think it's a no-brainer. We could save one hour on the attorney and pretty much transition that into the, our portion of the study from Iowa State.
I guess I, I just feel there's plenty of that out there on soil compaction. That's me.
Um, we have a motion second on the floor. Can we do a roll call vote on this?
Plack?
No.
Nath?
Yes.
Whacker?
Yes.
Stucker?
Yes. Motion carries three to one. We are up to discussion with our auditor.
I've asked Will and Ron to come in this morning because we have some, a problem with the furnace at the.
With your building, your furnace, your furnace went to fit on there?
At the, um, new emergency management building. So apparently it's not working at all, correct?
No, it can't. It's got a little heat exchange. We had to shut it off. He turns on, it's gonna put carbon dioxide in your building. So we've got a price, that's what Crane and everything set it on there, that's what me and Ron helped with.
I'm guessing you just got the one price from along with.
So far.
That's, that's who we work with. I mean, they're, we're gonna be able to help him. I don't know how many other plumbing companies are gonna allow us to help, so.
That keeps the labor down.
As of right now, that's thirty to forty-five days. He's gonna continue looking, see if he can find one, but.
Doesn't even have it on hand?
No, nobody has a rooftop on hand. Look, I want, took us to get the sixteen across the street.
I don't speak of any word on those, uh.
Batman cards, they're in. We're trying to work all these shoes out right now.
They've got for you.
All of them or just a handful?
No, no, they're all in.
They're all in.
The controls are pretty much all done. They're still, uh, working on the balancing, trying to finish that up before we can really start going fit with the engineering stuff.
Electricians are up there today trying to hook up, uh, smoke detectors and happy instead to come with them, so now we gotta call in to train again, wanna know where the rest of that's at.
So what, what, what are those?
Well, we wouldn't be able to approve it today, we'd have, 'cause it's not on the agenda, but we'd be able to put it on the agenda for next week for approval and then discuss that at that time, but.
Like, uh, with the budget for that building, or is it?
I'd have to look at.
That's in our budget.
Our budget.
That whole building is in our budget.
It's, it's in the super, so I'd have to look and see where we're at with that, how much is it?
Or, or there's like ARCA funds or anything like that, kind of, that.
How much is the total?
Fifteen.
There's barely enough.
So barely.
So I wouldn't wanna do ARCA for that.
Well, it's gotta be replaced soon, right?
I think there's probably money in the, in your guys' fund for that building, but I'd have to double check.
I guess, I, I would just, for consistency, I would like to see another price, even if.
Yeah, that's fine, go ahead, get another price from somebody, that's fine.
You want me to do that, or you guys?
Sure, go ahead. I don't know who you wanna go to. You can go to wherever you'd like. I don't, I'm just saying, we went in, 'cause that's who we work with, and he'll allow us to help. So that's up to you. If you wanna do another price, I don't have any hard feelings towards.
We can get another price, I mean, Algonia Plumbing does a good job.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not saying they don't, but I think doing our due diligence is better to look at.
Sure, I'm not, yeah, this is your building, I'm just letting you know. Sure, I'm not, yeah, this is your building. I'm just letting you know that I can't turn that furnace back on.
That is a problem, so.
Well, maybe put it on the agenda for next week to.
Yeah.
Discuss proof, uh, purchase of a furnace. And if we have other bits by then, great. If we don't, then we'll move forward and learn.
Put good data, except specs, there's, you know.
Yeah, so somebody's gonna have, whoever you get's gonna have to go.
Exactly.
I mean, we give you a picture. We got, we took a picture of the nameplate, and they get the specs off that.
Like, just go out and get a price.
Correct, correct.
Like fair.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, a rooftop is pretty, it's not, I won't say standard, but it is. I mean, you gotta have a roof curb made for whatever brand you're getting to adapt over to the roof curb that's there. I mean, but other than that, you've got seven and a half tons of AC and two hundred, two hundred thousand BTUs of heat, so.
Two hundred and forty thousand BTU. Is that, is that the same size we currently have in there?
The size that's in there's two hundred thousand BTUs on high and seven and a half tons air.
Okay, so this would go to two forty, okay?
I'm assuming it's two-stage. I don't say that, but I would guess.
Doesn't, yeah, it doesn't say that.
I would guess it's two, most of them anymore are high fire and low fire.
Yeah.
I was like, gotta work for that people down there. Is that, you have that thing there or here?
There.
You can't have it either, no.
Well, Will, didn't you say that there's a way to heat it still?
Yeah, she cranks up the other one.
Oh, yeah.
'Cause there's another one.
She, she cranks up the other one tonight and turns the ceiling fans on. It, I mean, there's, there's a furnace on the north end, there's a furnace for the offices. She can crank them both up, and then when the meeting starts, turn them down. Or leave the one on the north turned up, the one that's right by the office is turning down. It's, I mean, it's, there's gonna be some planning, yes, but.
Okay. Well, anything else on this or just the agenda item and stuff?
It, yeah, none on that. I don't have anything else unless you guys have anything else on that.
I almost said many questions about what else is going on. I mean,
Yeah.
I have nothing.
Okay, so I'll put it on the agenda for next week. Okay, thanks guys.
Thanks.
Um, and then if you guys have been filing Senate file one eighty-one, um, that talks about the valuations.
Do you want the picture of the nameplate?
Sure.
I get the nameplate and spec code. I'll just send it to you.
That'd be awesome. Thanks.
Um, we watched, I watched it, um, on that house yesterday. It will be moved to the house floor tomorrow. Um, I'm expecting it to advance out of the, the house. Uh, if it is approved, we have fifteen days from the passing of the bill to redo all of our valuations and our tips. If it passes as it stands right now, they're extending the deadline for budgets to April thirtieth instead of March thirty-first to give all counties and cities time to redo their valuations. So, um, if it doesn't pass, then our budgets go through as as we are right now. So we're kind of in a holding pattern, um, until we find out where that, what happens with the bill. Um, today, well, Thurs, in Thursday's paper will be notification of our special election on March seventh for North Union and North Kasut Schools. So that will be in Thursday's papers. On February twentieth, our office by state law is required to be open. That is a holiday for the county, so courthouse and all offices will be closed, so we will be putting on the radio that our office will be open on the twentieth for absentee voting on that day, so um, that will be advised. We will also make notice when on the doors of that also, even though the other offices in the courthouse will be closed. And next week, uh, Summit Carbon Solutions is asking to do a project update. Um, so Stephen Fott will be here that day along with Kaylee Langrell and Doug Burgold, um, to do that project update. And that is all I have on the agenda for next week. Uh, except for the normal, usual weekly business, and I think that's all I have.
Sounds good. Board Discussion Committee reports. Jack, you have anything? Carter?
I am.
Josh?
Well, we went to the ISAC, um, supervisors' meeting and got a lot of good information and, and, uh, it talked to some different vendors and things like that that were down there. Um, primarily just kinda went over and gave our input on some of the house files, incentive files that are out. Um, uh, that was well received. Um, just a lot of, a lot of good information from down there on different things going on. Um, Shelby County did present on how things are going with their ordinance and, and their process that they're in right now, federal court, things like that. Um, let's see, what else? It was a long day. A lot of information.
That's for sure. Anything else? Yours or?
Nope.
Good. Um, yeah, I was also at the statewide supervisors' day with ISAC last Thursday. Um, there was quite a bit of information, a lot of, a lot of good discussion. The insurance piece with the CO2 project is one thing I definitely need to check in on. Um, going forward, we've got the meeting for EMA tomorrow, conference board for Judy on Thursday. Um, and I will have the legislative conference coming up here. I'll be leaving Friday. We'll be back Wednesday, so. Um, for the, for other discussion, Jack and Carter, you guys would have, Carter would have been here for some of the stuff on last Tuesday, but after you had left, we went through the engineers' budget, and I have a list of several things to go over, but I'm fairly concerned about that one and the taxes that were requested, so. I don't, don't know if you've had any time to review that, Jack, or not, but.
Thanks, I have tile and stuff here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure. But just to bring that to attention, I, I think there's some things we'll need to look back over, so.
I looked over the piece.
Okay.
And then we have budget workshops after this.
Yep. Well, any other business to come before the board here? If not, I will adjourn the meeting at nine eighteen.